We're recording. Oh, we are? Okay, great. All right, so we're gonna call this meeting to order. And our clerk of council, Judy Kidner, is missing her first meeting ever today. She is homesick. So I'm gonna deputize village manager Patty Bates to be our deputy clerk. All right, so raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Ohio
And the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respects
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs
The ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of
Deputy clerk of council.
Deputy clerk of council.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so our first order of business is we have a new officer here. Oh, yeah, sorry. We're gonna have Patty call over. And then we're gonna swear on our new officer.
Housh.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Kimfling.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Also, missing is councilperson Kevin Stokes. Also present are Chief Carlson, Assistant Village Manager, Finance Director Melissa Dodd, myself, and Village Solicitor Chris Conner.
Oh, great. So I would like to invite Richard Neal and Mary Canine for the swearing in.
Chief, do you want to
Yeah, I'd just like to say real quick, members of the council and guests and family, we're very excited to add Richard to the YSPD team. It's been a long process. To be very proud, and we're excited. Mary, you wanna do the swearing in?
Absolutely. Richard, would you stand behind the podium? Ready?
I'm ready.
On this date, you are hereby commissioned as a peace officer to serve as a police officer for the Yellow Springs Police Department pursuant to Section 737.16 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Richard E. Neal
I, Richard E. Neal.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
And I will discharge the duties of the office of police officer
And I will discharge the duties of the office of police officer
To which I have been appointed
To which I've been appointed.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By your signature, you hereby swore or affirmed that the commission issued to you is pursuant to the authority vested in me. And the individual has appeared before me and affixed your signature to this oath in my presence. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done.
All right, thanks everyone. All right.
I'll be back.
All right, cool. All right. Wow, you all suck around. Okay, so we have some more swearing in to do. So Janu, Jared Sims. Kathy, you're getting sworn in, right? Mike?
No, not yet.
Nope? I think that was on my list.
Tim, bro.
I'm sorry, Tim. What? Thank you. I'm fine. All right. All right, so if you guys want to come up, we'll do this together. All right. Give you guys each one of these. And Tim. All right, and Jared. Okay, and so the only thing that will be different is everyone will say in the name of their commission when we get there, all right? I think you guys all know which ones you are being part of. Okay, so if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly affirm
I solemnly affirm
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Ohio
And the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respects
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinance of the Village of Yellow Springs
And ordinance of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of All right, cool. All right, you guys are sworn in. Thanks, Jared. Thanks, Tim. And I think if you guys can sign those before you go, and Patty will grab them. All right, we appreciate your service.
I have a pen if anyone needs to borrow.
Okay. Next on our agenda are announcements.
The first announcement I would like to make is that even though I said the last time that you would have brown water tomorrow, you will not have brown water tomorrow because the valve exerciser did not get delivered as promised. And so it may happen later this week or next week. And as soon as we have a firm date for everyone, we will post that on our Facebook page and our website, and as well as letting the YS News know so that you can have as much notice as possible. And when that does happen again, there will be drinking and cooking water available down in the police department at the dispatch window for you to pick up.
Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, two quick things. April 7th, opening day for trails. Lots of great stuff happening at the Yellow Springs Station. The YS Brewery is opening that day early at 11 o'clock. So they're gonna be part of the festivities, as well as Green County Parks and Trails. We've got green cats there showing people how to put their bikes on the bike rack on their buses, and lots of other stuff. One home's gonna be there as well, and there'll be lots of free giveaways. And the other thing, I wanted to put this just out there so we didn't double point. June 27th is when we will complete the active transportation plan. And there will be a community forum from 7:00 to 8:30 in Rooms A&amp;B. So I just wanna make sure we have that on our radar, that's months away. All right. Anything else? Okay. So if not, we have a consent agenda, and there is one item, which is the minutes from our last meeting, March 5th. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll forward the correction.
Okay. Okay, all right, let's take those off the consent agenda then. Okay.
Well, the two typos are on page four, under nominations. The third nomination, the last sentence, it says between second and, and the, should say, motions. Nisco, ask. So that's one typo. And then at the top of the second page, the second line, the first word should be the.
Page five, second line.
Yep. The first word should be T-H-O-U-G-H.
And I have two minor things. Do you go ahead?
I was gonna s- no, I'm sorry.
Okay. On page two, in the minutes of the discussion of the utility roundup, there's a comment from David Turner regarding nepotism on commissions. And I wasn't sure that that was part of the conversation of the utility roundup. I can stay there, but it didn't seem like it quite fit there.
But I think that's, I'm not sure if that's where he
Maybe just when the comment was made.
Yeah, you guys said no, that didn't count.
Oh.
That's next. Then I made it again the next time.
Okay. And then there's another small typo at the bottom of page two, the last sentence that says announce or should announce.
That's the one I found.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. Anything else on the minutes from March 5th? Okay, I'm not all, entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes as a minute.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, yes, Judy?
You know, under announcements, I wondered if it would be good again to just make the announcement about Melissa's leaving because our last meeting was not a regular council meeting. And I just feel like it's an important loss for the community. And so I just felt like that should be made note of in announcements again.
Okay. Yes. Patty, do you want to?
Yes, and Melissa wants.
Melissa, you go ahead.
Unfortunately, Melissa is leaving us. I'm happy for her, sad for us. She is leaving to become the city manager in Bellbrook, Ohio, which is not too far down the road. I'm sure she will do the same amazing job for them that she has done for us, and we will miss her.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I feel like this is a terrible loss for our community. I'm really sorry that you leave. Good luck, though. And, yeah, I'm just, I feel like we've lost a very excellent staff member. And so I just wanted to be able to say that publicly.
I would say, though, that I think, Melissa, you have really put our financial, our finances in good shape, both in terms of getting us from the place where we were in the red to also starting to account for capital improvements and just getting things in much better shape. So, thanks.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. You are gonna be severely missed. I think what I would add to what Mary Anna said is, some of the things that you've tackled, I know we're celebrating tonight, the Army Corps of Engineers grant, finally getting that money after a decade. And, you know, getting the Safe Routes to School project back on board, just setting some things in motion that I hope we're gonna be able to continue. Thanks a lot. Okay, so a review of the agenda. Anything that we need to adjust on tonight's agenda?
I have a couple things. One is Tommy Reth is going to be giving the annual report for the Environmental Commission. And he has a class. So I'm requesting that that report be moved to one of the new reports. He can be there by then, but he's not gonna be able to be here by the time that it's listed on the agenda. And I'd also like to include nominating him. We interviewed him, Lisa and I interviewed him for his second term. And he's been an amazing member of the Environmental Commission. So I'd like to nominate him. Again, you can do that if you get that saying on the
Yep.
And lastly, we had a number of petitions and communications, and I just want to say it's gonna, I take one of the topics.
Anything else on the agenda?
Included in the past, I had an update at council about utility affordability. I could handle that, just mention it really quickly as part of old business.
Okay. So you wanna add that to old business?
Thank you.
And I also noticed that the Arts and Culture Commission has a budget request. So I think we normally add that to new business, to consider that. All right, so
Actually, you know what? I might, I was gonna just do it under boards and commissions, but there's a recommendation. JSTF is doing a kind of a new process for the next recommendation they're considering. Maybe I'll just say that under new business, it's a little earlier than the meeting. People might hear it a little better, so.
So this is the JSTF request for
Just a recommendation, yep. Process.
Okay. So with that, petitions and communications, take a deep breath.
Yeah, okay. We had a few online communications. One was from Doris Hubstman, thanking the electric crew, in particular with Johnny, for a quick response. I suppose that was maybe an electric outage. Then we had a couple online communications from the Green County Public Health. One was in regard to suicide prevention training from a mini grant. And I'm hopeful that that's also going to the police department. Josh, I don't know if you know whether the police got that communication about suicide prevention training.
Hmm, maybe.
It seems like it would be good for that to get to the police department. And then they're also, they're having a 5K run walk on April 21st. And Hope Path and the Green County Public Health made an announcement, made notice of groundwater appreciation week.
Or awareness.
Awareness week. At any rate, there was an extensive report from Hope Path about what groundwater is and why it's important. And it, I would really, it's so important. Perhaps the Yellow Springs News can get a copy of that. If you can't get the news a copy of it, because it was very educational in terms of how groundwater, where it is, what happens to it, and how dependent Yellow Springs is. The county also noted that almost one half of the Americans use groundwater that they drink a lot. The Chamber, also Chamber Commerce submitted their annual report. And they also noted that they're having their shredded day on the April 21st. No. Yes, April 21st, Saturday, at 9:00 noon, the corner of Limestone and Corry. And not only can you bring paper products, but you can also bring electronics and batteries, not car batteries, but small batteries to be recycled. Alice Jacobs submitted some documents about different kinds of utility assistance programs. And I think that that is gonna, should fit nicely with the utility roundup. And we will refer that to them. Ellen Hoover wrote a letter to council listing a number of concerns about infrastructure as a result of an accident that her husband had on our sidewalks. And I think that it's with following up on, and Brian, I'm talking with you and Patty. I don't think we have followed up.
Actually, I had, did send her an email today, but I think there's additional follow-up that should be done.
Judith, you say you included something about old supplies training?
Well, there's a conversation, and I think it's eventually will come to the council table. But I know we're gonna have a little meeting first. Kevin, from council, you know, was, has been asking the village to look at, I mean, the whole council has been wanting to look at, if there's advice training. This was just one of the possible options, and I consider that.
Mark Heiss submitted a letter in support of the street fair. Rocket submitted a letter complaining about the gas, the sound coming out of the gas pump at Speedway. And I think that they toned it down, but
There really isn't a violation there, but we quietly asked them to turn it down.
Yes, we quietly asked.
Quiet it down.
Okay. Oh, and the last thing is the announcement that's going to be going out, has started going out, about community conversations on housing. These are four events that are gonna happen in April. And they're an opportunity for all the citizens to come. Hopefully, one of the dates will work for you, to find out more about the housing situation and to be able to talk with fellow citizens about your concerns about it and what they might wanna be doing about it. So those dates are Wednesday, April 4th, at 7:00 at Milvahn School. We will, we haven't, we haven't formally gotten childcare for these events, but probably, hopefully, the Milvahn event, we'd have childcare. Then the next day, in the morning at 10:30 at the Senior Center, it'll be Thursday, April 5th, there will be a same conversation. Kevin Magruder will be the presenter, and each of these present the PowerPoints. And mediation program will be the facilitators. Then on Monday, April 9th, at 6:00 at the Baptist Church, will be the third community conversation on housing. And the last one, for people who can't make any of the first three, will be Saturday, April 21st, at 2:00 p.m. in the Bryant Center, probably, probably, um, maybe. So we pay for as many people as possible to come to them, and so that's it.
Great. And regarding childcare, do you already have an avenue for that?
No.
So what we've done in the past is ask the high school, because students have their community service hours.
Do that.
Yep.
Okay, do that.
Okay, thanks, Mary Ann. And with that, we'll move into our legislation portion of the meeting. And the first resolution we have is approving council 2018 goals. And Patty, are you gonna read this one again?
If you would like me to read the entire
Great, I would. If you don't mind, I'd love for you to read it in full.
Whereas village council adopts goals to guide decision-making and resource allocation for the village, and whereas village council has publicly collaborated as to the aspirations, need, and vision for the community, and whereas village council has diligently sought input from the community goal, the community in goal-setting for 2018, now therefore, council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, council has identified the following values as the basis for their 2018 goals. Value 1, deepen decision-making processes with active citizen participation and effective representative governments. Value 2, be a model employer actively working to achieve diversity in hiring and employee retention, and a provider of services within a responsible and sustainable fiscal framework. Value 3, create a welcoming community of opportunity for all persons, regardless of race, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, ethnicity, economic status, ability, or religious affiliation. Value 4, pursue a strong economy that provides diverse employment, creates a stable tax base, and supports community values, particularly affordability. Value 5, seek in all decisions and actions to reduce the community's carbon footprint, encourage sound ecological practices, and provide careful, creative, and cooperative stewardship of land resources. Value 6, intentionally promote anti-racism, inclusion, equity, and accessibility through all policies, procedures, and processes. Section 2, the 2018 council goals as detailed in the attached exhibit A are hereby approved.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay. So I'll begin with a brief discussion. We had a working session last Tuesday where we went through each goal in detail. There were some refinements that were discussed, but overall, I think that everyone felt that the goals, and particularly, I think the focus should be on the 2018 actions, were things that made sense to focus on this year. And with that, would any other council members like to, have any comments? No? Okay. Any questions or comments from citizens? And the last thing I'll emphasize is that we understand the goals are a work in progress, so we will continue to refine them throughout the year. And we're gonna be doing some work on prioritizing based on what our staff's capacity is as well. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So our next resolution is 201805, and that is amending our TASER policy. And game for reading this one, too?
As long as you understand, I don't read as quickly as Judy.
Okay. All right, well, let's read it in full, please.
Whereas the Village of Yellow Springs is a diverse community whose citizens are active in local governments, and whereas there has been great concern expressed on a national level regarding policing methods and training, and whereas the state of Ohio has created the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board to advise and work with the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the purpose of defining statewide minimum standards for state and local law enforcement, including the proper use of force. And whereas the Village of Yellow Springs and its residents are deeply concerned about policing methods and the potential impacts that they may have on all segments of the population, specifically on persons of color and persons with limited economic opportunity. And whereas the Village of Yellow Springs has committed to the Village Guidelines for local policing to be used by the village in all matters related to policing, including policies, practices, and recruitment. And whereas the Justice System Task Force created by the Village, by the Yellow Springs Village Council, has worked collaboratively with the Yellow Springs Police Department and Village Manager, which included a review and consideration of national and Ohio policies pertaining to the use of tasers. And whereas the Justice System Task Force, the Yellow Springs Police Department, and the Village Manager hereby jointly recommend that the policies set forth in the attached exhibit A to this resolution be adopted by Captain Village Council, now therefore be resolved that. Section 1, the Village of Yellow Springs Police Department shall immediately employ the TASER policy heretofore attached as exhibit A, as the official policy for TASER deployment by any officer of the Village of the Yellow Springs Police Department. Section 2, this policy shall not be changed except by an official active of the Yellow Springs Village Council.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay. Sergeant Knapp, why don't you leave this one off for us? So just gotta give a little bit of a background of sort of what we, sort of how we got to the policy.
I'm asking you to everybody. I like it that way. Oh, so what we did is we worked together with the Justice System Task Force to come up with a policy that not only addressed a lot of the concerns nationally and locally with the police use of force and the use of certain devices and weapons that police officers are authorized to carry. And we came up with something that was, I think, a good fit for our agency, our community. And it's gonna benefit, I think, everybody in terms of keeping the citizens safe and the officers safe. So I think it's gonna be a good way that we show that we're looking to be progressive and find ways that we can work together in the community. And are there any questions from the council? Sum it up, I guess?
That sums it up well. Great, Sergeant Knapp. Thank you. And I wanna say, and I know Judy will probably have something to say as well, that I really appreciated this was a collaborative effort. We had community members such as Alice Jacobs involved in the discussion about what we needed in a TASER policy for our village that would conform with our guidelines for village policing. Sergeant Knapp, Chief Carlson, and the other officers were very engaged. We had support from our village solicitor. Patty was there as well. And so it was a really good collaborative effort. Judy?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight some of the changes. And I think through this conversation we had, I mean, I think Chief Knapp and, not Chief Knapp, sorry, here Sergeant Knapp and Chief Carlson had some concerns, you know, understanding, you know, what is it that we were, the JSTF had looked at and had concerns about. And I think, so I think we learned some things about, you know, we were a little bit talking past each other initially in terms of conducted energy weapons, as they're called officially. They have reduced a lot of injuries. Now, a lot of us who are not in police work, we've seen where there's been injuries from them, which there can be, and they can, they can hurt people. But they also, in the larger context, can be a way to, to address a dangerous situation in a less than lethal way. So, so the first thing that we did was we added some lines. So we're starting with Alexa- So we're starting with Lexa Pole, which is a national police policymaker, I don't know what to call it, consulting firm. They, they developed policies for police departments, and our police department decided to use it because our policies were a hodgepodge of policies from a lot of different police departments. And it was in great need of bringing some order to it, and the sergeants with the chief saw this as a good way to do it. And I think there's this effort in the state of Ohio, it's coming from the Attorney General's office, called the Ohio Collaborative, which is trying to professionalize policing and sort of make things more standardized. Is that right? Okay. And so some of the things that we, on the other hand, we've wanted to, we felt like it was important, I mean, Lexa Pole isn't necessarily perfect, their policies, some of those, some of the policies we need to look at, and we want to also be able to make certain kind, to make adjustments. And in fact, when we looked at kind of the national conversation about Lexa Pole, police policy, there's, there's the idea out there that there is room for editing and shaping it towards values of different communities. The first thing, you know, when we talked about the policy, that we changed the language in was, we said, "The conducted energy weapon is intended to protect against persons who pose an immediate threat." While the, now I'm skipping a little bit here, "While the appropriate use of such a device should result in fewer serious injuries to officers and suspects." So that's sort of acknowledging the fact that, yes, that it should, it actually can be safer. CEW's are potentially lethal devices when used on vulnerable populations or not within the proper protocol. So a lot of, when we see these national incidents, you know, someone's been tased 10 times in a row, and they end up dying, you know, this is not within proper protocols. We wanted to emphasize that though they can make things safer, they can, they also are potentially lethal, and we want our police officers to be aware of that. We want to make that statement right up front. Another thing I wanted to point to people's attention is that TASERS are not to be used solely to gain compliance. So that's, you know, they're, they're expected to be used in a situation where there is, you know, a perceived danger. So, for example, it says now in the policy, "Mere flight from pursuing officer is not a reason to use a TASER." If there is an danger to getting one through, if there's not anything really dangerous, somebody, you know, some minor violation, and they end up running, that's not a reason to tase someone. So we wanted to get at the, the fact that, you know, if you perceive them as not lethal, and then just using them for compliance, I mean, we need to acknowledge they are dangerous, so we don't wanna be using them in circumstances where it's not, it's just they're a minor, something minor is going on, and we don't want our police officers using them in that way. And the police department was very com, was comfortable with that. And one thing that we added in, oh, and then, for example, it talks about, you know, again, if you use it more, if there was a reason to use it, there's, it says, "Officers should generally not intentionally apply more than one conducted energy weapon on, at a time against a single subject." So again, again, they need to be used with thoughtfulness, and again, they can pose a danger to someone's health, especially when they are being repeatedly used. It talks, there's also a section in here about people who are, you know, particularly at risk in the use of TASERS that you really, and for example, it talks about a pregnant woman, there needs to be care for people under the influence of substances, a person who appears to be in need of medical attention, the sensitive areas that you wanna avoid trying to hit with the TASER if you are using it. And then after a person has been tased, they need to be seen to make sure, you know, by, how does it say it here, "All persons who have been struck shall be medically assessed prior to tasing." So we wanna be looking out for the, that something that would hurt that person's health is not gonna happen, should it need to be used. And I know that was added on was a section just about these situations where people have, just the circumstances where there's been a real negative impact on the health of people who have been tased. Again, what is, it is a tool for police officers, it is generally less than a lethal tool, and people recover fairly quickly and often are not, you know, injured from them, but we don't, so we want, it's kind of that balance of understanding of their use. And I, I'm very pleased with the changes.
Me too. All right.
Did I explain that well enough? I don't.
Um, so.
Thank you.
Nothing else for me, Patty. Did you want to add anything?
No, just that I, I thought that we all worked together very well to, to come up with this, and as Judith said, there was a little bit of disconnect in the beginning, but we sat down at the table and said, "Well, this is how we read this." And of course, the other side was like, "Well, that's not how we're reading it." So at the end of the day, we came up with what everyone agrees is a good policy.
Any questions or comments from citizens? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. One more piece of legislation tonight is ordinance 2018-06. And Patty, would you please read that one? I think we should read it in full as well, so we understand it.
Don't take a motion.
Oh, sorry, yes. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2018-06.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Adding a new section, 1040.12 to Article 4 Public Utilities, establish a continuity of service clause for village utilities. Whereas the Village of Yellow Springs provides utilities which include electric, water, sewage, and garbage services for all residents and businesses eligible for set services within the village, and whereas the Village of Yellow Springs is committed to providing continuous reliable utility services, and whereas it has recognized that at times there may be unpreventable natural occurrences or accidents which may interrupt any of our utility services. Now therefore, Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1, a new Section 1040.12 establishing a continuity of service clause for the Village of Yellow Springs of the codified ordinances, the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio is hereby enacted to read as set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached here too and incorporated here in. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect in the full force at the earliest date permitted by law.
Okay. Melissa?
Okay, so this ordinance is actually just one of those loose-end ordinances that I wanted to get in front of council before I left because it's important. All, all utility providers have a continuity of service clause such as this within their ordinances and policies, and all this is doing is just saying that the village is going to do everything that it can to supply service, and that at some points, there, there could be outages due to natural occurrences or accidents, and that we are not responsible for those essentially. So it covers all of our utilities as well.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? And since this is the first meeting, I'm not gonna open a public hearing unless there are any comments or questions from citizens. We can vote on it next time when I was here. Okay. So we're now gonna move into citizen concerns, and this is the time on the agenda when we will entertain any comments about things that are not items on the agenda, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. So do we have any citizen concerns? Okay. Then we're on to special reports, and I believe Saul Greenberg, Economic Sustainability Commissioner, you are listed first.
Thank you. Okay. Do people have copies of this?
Yeah, they're on the table.
Okay. So I'm just going to summarize the report from the Economic Sustainability Commission. And basically, we first talked about the membership, and there have been some changes in membership with this, this year, and it's sort of resulted in some greater energy and efficiency. We now have two former council members as members of the commission. We have representation from the Village of Yellow Springs State System, and we have all members of the commission right now who are very actively involved, and it took a little bit of shuffling of people who were on the initial commission discovering what, just how much time and commitment it needed from them themselves. So I think we've gone from re-implemented, a little over two years ago, maybe, to reinvigorate because we're at a point now where I think we're ready to function with more power and efficiency and more meaningfulness. One of the first items that has come up in terms of something that's solid enough to give some summarization about is the revolving loan fund. The commission spent quite a bit of time, and that time was spread out over a period of time with some other things coming into play. Meanwhile, talking about developing the revolving loan fund, and then eventually being able to pass it on to council, which then led to a topic which is on our goals for next year, so I'm skipping ahead a tiny bit in this report, but it's tied together, which has to do with a designated CIC. Because one of the primary issues and problems that came out of the discussion about the revolving loan fund was the fiscal management of those funds themselves. How would they be dispersed? How would they be followed? How would they be audited? What sort of liabilities would a person applying for that fund or funds be subject to, and under what sort of governance would that come? That led to the discussion about a designated CIC. So the revolving.
And Saul, do you wanna share with folks what a CIC is?
Well, I'm gonna learn a lot more about it in just a few weeks.
Well, I just meant corporate, I mean, Community Improvement Corporation.
Yeah, so a designated community, yeah, CI Improvement Corporation.
Yep.
Yeah. Which will dedicate most of our next meeting to studying and understanding and being able to determine whether or not we can do more with it and what we can do, and what we would feel that would be meaningful for the commission to take up, to put it really simply. So the revolving loan fund really led to some other really potentially meaningful business that is gonna be ongoing. Another very significant piece of business that came to the commission was dealing with the Center for Business and Education. Because during this period of time, the land was beaded over to the village, and the commission was asked to do some work around finding out what people in the village had in terms of ideas for the utilization of that land, and we held a couple of community forums. We made a report here, and we did a survey through several different means, and came up with some really good ideas from citizens in terms of input. And then subsequent to that, Cresco approached the village, and the commission itself didn't have a whole lot to do with that, but it positions the commission in such a way that we can also, this is anticipating an item that is a goal for this coming year of the commission, to consider some more ideas about what can be done with the remainder of that land, or should be done, and consideration thereof, particularly right now for the commission in terms of marketing and considering any plans going forward. So even though we kind of diverted our attention from working on some other things to CVE, it was a worthwhile endeavor, and once again, it folds into what we're doing in terms of going forward. Another topic that came up to the commission relatively more recently came out of a conference that Community Solutions held, in which a lot of people here, these sessions by Michael Schuman, which led to the idea of localization and what that could mean for Yellow Springs. There's been an ad hoc group independent of council, which is being attended by some council members, myself also as a community representative, a representative of Community Solutions, and people representing the Morgan Family Foundation, and the Yellow Springs Foundation, as well as the Yellow Springs Credit Union, in terms of looking at bringing Michael Schuman to town, or perhaps communicating with them electronically to, to examining ideas around localization. It's pretty free-floating right now, but Sammy Humber from the Credit Union submitted a proposal to the National Credit Union Association for some money to go toward the expenses for our consultation with Michael Schuman, and we should hear very shortly whether or not that proposal is accepted. It's been very favorably looked upon by the body who receives that proposal. And then, it's still very much in a brainstorming stage, but there aren't any specific propositions coming out of that yet. So these all lead to specifics for goals for 2018. Before I restate what some of those are, we also listed guests that came to the Sustainability Commission in the citizens' concerns aspect, and if you have a moment to read those, I think you'll see that it's been a very interesting and stimulating mix, and sometimes it leads to further business, and sometimes it's just interesting and important, but we don't know what'll happen with any of those items that the guests brought forward. But specifically for goals for 2018, we're still working on completing an incentive policy, which I think is pretty.
It's in the patent.
Okay, so.
It's in the.
Okay, so council guests, our recommendations for incentive policy, which is one of the items of business that we've been working on off and on over the last couple of years. And goal number two, explore the capacity of the EPC to advise and assist council on the formation of the designated Community Improvement Corporation for the Village of Yellow Springs. Notice the word "explore" the capacity. That's because we're very much in a learning stage, and most of the conversations we've had so far is, "What is it?" And we, we have several ideas and impressions, and now we have some materials. We'll have an invited speaker through our next meeting, and we hope to know a whole lot more and move to a more specific place than just exploring the capacity base. Goal number three, engage with the localization efforts to provide support as able. Again, that's pretty much in a brainstorming stage, so we're saying, we're qualifying what we're saying as a goal because we're saying "as able." We don't really know yet, but council is a part of those ad hoc discussions, so that will come to more definition hopefully also soon. And goal number four, I already mentioned, identify an attraction and marketing strategy for the CVE as directed by council. That's pretty much it. Questions?
Thank you, Saul.
I just have a couple of comments. One, Michael Schuman was here a few years ago. I don't know if you remember. Okay, just wondering if people remember that.
Kind of how we got.
Oh, exactly. Okay, I wasn't sure. I hadn't heard where I stood, so I don't know if you remember. I mean, it was many years ago, we did a day workshop at a grade school, I think. But the other thing is, in terms of the qualifying criteria, something council's talking about is implementing something that is known out there in the world as diversity hiring practices. And I wondered if we would want to, one thing I've, I have thought, as the village puts into place diversity hiring practices for the village, I had thought it would be great if we could be encouraging other institutions, non-pro. be encouraging other institutions, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, that they would also implement these hiring practices. And so I'm just wondering about adding that once-
I think you're referring to the incentive policy?
Yes.
And I think that Saul had just been highlighting the annual report and hadn't done any overview comments at all about the incentive policy yet, but it took the recommendation, I think we have other probably comments about that separate.
Wouldn't you get to that item?
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, it's good.
I was looking ahead. I was looking at the incentive policy. Yeah, sorry about that.
Well, I actually have, is there a plan to talk about this?
Yeah, it's, we would think it would be a future agenda item.
Yeah, there's maybe a couple of comments that could be made, and then we can bring it back, just very short. Well, I could, or maybe Karen could, I'm glad to know, if we're ready to go to that.
I guess, I just, given that HRC provides small grants, and I'm not sure why it just is called incentive policy, but it seems like primarily it's about grants, so I'm not sure that it is or not, but I would suggest that if something like this was going to be done, that we look at sort of broadly ways that the village contributes in kind or money to the various things that we contribute to, as this is being, as ever. Thank you.
So Lisa, did you want to make a few comments about it before we wrap this piece up?
Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding that this commission has been working on an incentive policy for some time. I think it's an interesting idea to understand how various types of incentives and monies for different purposes might fit together. But the purpose of this policy specifically is to encourage investment in both for-profit and nonprofit businesses that can improve the quality of life in the village. And the commission, I think, has done an excellent job in aligning this with village values, and then both identifying quality, qualifying criteria that really focus on the merit and capacity of an organization who might get an incentive to make the best use of it. And then there's a process, and then there's actually an application included. And the idea of including the application is to kind of bring it more specifically to life. What kinds of questions would be asked? What kind of information would we need? I think some of the open issues that we would, the commission would value as feedback from council have to do with not only the sufficiency of the document, but also then who's going to make these decisions? And is it part of the DCIC, or is the commission going to have some role? I think that's an area that we will definitely want to input from council.
And I just want to add, you know what started this initiative was the idea that we should not be ad hoc in these decisions, but that we should have a consistent approach and be transparent. And, yeah, I really appreciate the commission tackling this. It's an excellent document, and it will be on probably our next agenda. Saul, thanks for your leadership as chair, and I'm now going to have actually our new chair of the Arts and Culture Commission, Brittany Baum, come up and tell us what the Arts and Culture Commission did last year.
Hi, everyone, I'm Brittany Baum. Our current members are John Flunning, Catherine Roma, Nancy Mellon, Kathy Moulton, Lisa Krieger, and Brian House. We covered about five different things, four of them last year. The first was the Village Inspiration and Design Award, or the VITA. The goal of that is to recognize the value of public art in our community, which drives economic development and enhances quality of life. This was awarded to Haus at Oom in 2017 for their important contributions to the village. The second item I'm making in the report is the John Bryan Community Gallery. It was since 2012 that art was up in the hallways. Last year was the first year in five years that we have art backed up in the hallways here at the building. The first exhibit was Erin Smith, who is a local artist in the area. Once her artwork, or once her exhibit ended, we worked directly with the Yellow Springs Art Council to create a permanent home for their permanent collection. As you can see right now in the hallways, we have the banner exhibit up right now that will run through June 30th. And the goal of this partnership is just to highlight the importance of art in our community. So we're looking to have several of this throughout every year. The third area was Public Arts and Culture Projects. One of our important projects was the kindness, or were the kindness banners that were placed up. A lot of people probably saw from social media, there was a lot of feedback on these banners. The goal was to recognize the importance of being kind and highlighting the village values of being a welcoming community. These banners are installed throughout the year in between different events. We're hoping that they will go up on Good Friday, and they'll remain up until an upcoming event is coming up that we can highlight, and then we're hoping that they'll go back up in between events. We also partnered with various organizations to promote public art and culture in Y.S. We met with members of the Arts Council and Mills Lawn Elementary School to discuss various upcoming projects. One of their goals is to raise money for the Wheel and Golf Sculpture Project. These meetings and partnerships are planning to continue throughout 2018. Our goals for 2018 are to continue to administer the VITA Award, to promote visibility of the African-American experience in Yellow Springs throughout exhibits and experiences of the arts. One of those is the Gomp statue project, and ongoing communication through liaisons with the 365 project. Our third goal is to facilitate the ongoing success of the John Bryan Community Gallery through collaboration with Yellow Springs Art Council. We're also working on the Hidden Figures acquisition, excuse me, acquisition. Currently, this is being shown at the Mills Lawn Elementary School, and we're working with the Arts Council on perhaps creating a second set that can either live at, live at the Arts Council or have some other homes in Yellow Springs. Our fourth goal is to revisit and update the mission statement and vision statement of the Arts and Cultural Commission to postulate advocacy across the spectrum of art activities and experiences. We'd like to review the commission's understanding of public art, review our overall meaning of arts and culture, and promote a bridge to the arts for village staff, community members. The final item we have is the budget request for 2018. I don't know if you want to talk about that now, or if that's new business.
Why don't you make a few comments, since we're going to be talking about it later, just to tee that up?
Our total request is $5,000. 500 of it would be spent towards the Village Inspiration and Design Award. That's through education, materials, and special events. 1,000 is requested towards the John Bryan Community Center Gallery. That's also for education, materials, and special events. And then the last chunk, for 3,500, is for community sponsorships. For example, the Arcans Skate Park Reception and Kindness Banners are all examples of past items. Some of our future ideas are the Wheel and Golf Project, the Banner Festival, a World Music Day, artistic wayfinding signage. We're hoping to maybe work with collaboration with the Chamber on that, and then also a high school art mural. That's all I have for you guys tonight.
All right. Thanks, Brittany.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to say to both of the commissions, the work of the commissions is incredible. I mean, what you guys are getting done, it's, I mean, it's a big increase in activity and really doing great things for the village, so I really appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, appreciate it. Okay, so we are now going to move into old business, and Mary Ann, I believe we've got a housing-
I'm sorry, did you know-
Are we going to do the budget discussion? I thought we added that to-
It's under new business.
It's under new business.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on old business now. All right, I'm going to revoke your deputy privilege.
Hey, thanks for coming.
All right. So, housing, yeah, for the commissions. All right. Housing update.
Yeah, I submitted a written report about what the Housing Advisory Board has been doing, and basically, there are two areas of focus. The primary one right now is getting ready to have the conversations on housing in April. The other activity that we have been doing is outreach to people who work in the area of mixed income housing, and talk to four people around the country who do this work, and we're collecting recommendations that they've given us that include such things and strategies that might work, might work in Yellow Springs, as well as other resources that you can pack in too. And so, I think that maybe that's all that I have to say right now, unless anyone, council has any questions, comments, or anyone in the audience has any question or comment.
I guess I wondered, we had, we started this conversation at the goals, where, you know, Brian brought up the, you know, the focus of the Glass Farm and how we balance that, you know, with, you know, other potential developmental opportunities in the village. So I guess I just had the question about, I think there was the question about the planning for the PowerPoint and presentation on housing, this assessment, I think is really good. And the PowerPoint is very good, I think, but, and Karen did a lot of great editing on it, which was very excellent. But I did wonder, there is, you know, it does focus, the, you know, the one slide does focus at sort of starting to think about the Glass Farm, and I guess the question is, you know, is that, I mean, I guess I just wondered if the council, I just wondered where council, how council, how that should fit in. Because I've been questioning it myself, I'm not quite sure.
What I'd like to say, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves in terms of what we're talking about at council, and I anticipate that our, that our next Advisory Committee Board, we're going, I want to have a discussion of how do we, how do we, when do we reach out to potential other developers? How do we do that? Who's going to do it? And I'd rather keep that at the advisory board level now. I do think it's appropriate, I mean, hopefully, everyone knows the Village owns the Glass Farm, where it is, and that it has been considered for housing development for a number of years since in our, I think, our comp plan and vision for that, and I think it's totally appropriate that it's listed in the PowerPoint.
Oh, it's not that it should be listed in PowerPoint, it's just, I just wondered what the balance was in terms of the focus on that, if it had been raised, and I'm a little confused myself with the problem.
I don't think there's a problem.
Do you want to talk about what you added to the housing goal related to this?
Well, the housing goal has a number of action steps for 2018. Those action steps include, one of them, doing the community conversations on housing, developing a vision for what we want Yellow Springs to be in terms of housing, who do we want to be able to house? Secondly, creating concrete goals in terms of what kind of housing, how much housing of these different types we would need in the next five to 10 years to meet, to meet that vision. Then the third piece would be strategies to meet that vision, and those strategies include, of course, we have the Glass Farm, which we can build housing. It also includes working with developers and potential developers, landowners who are interested in developing their land, infill, various types of infill strategies and encouragement, and then direct funding for home development and home buyers, private-public partnerships. Those are the kind of strategies. Now, when we do those strategies, what we do, how we do them, that is all, we're just in the process of talking to people, we'll be talking to other communities that have done this, so that we can try to create an effective plan to do what we want to do. And we're at the eighty steps of that right now, so I don't know, I don't think there's a lot more to talk, to talk in this.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight, because there was the addition to, I'll just read it out, sequels to collaborate with stakeholders to support inclusive housing on privately owned properties. So that was one area, I know where we're sort of addressing that. We've got an opportunity with Glass Farm, but we've got these other opportunities that I mean, I think that recognizes.
Yeah, and we, I don't think it's appropriate for us to start talking about too much about potential opportunities on private property until we've actually had some conversations with private property owners. So that's why I'm hesitant to get very involved in that conversation.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Comments from citizens? All right. So Patty, I think the next one is you, fees for services related to events.
Yes, a while back, and I believe it was Mary Ann who asked for us to bring this information back. We had previously brought some information to council, I mean, being the staff, regarding the fees, charging for events, various events that village personnel spend time, time or use equipment on, that kind of thing. This is a brief list of the, some of the events, most of the events that we hold. There are some new ones that aren't on that particular list, such as Springs Fest and a couple of other things. This is generally what we spend for each of those events. In addition, the electric department consistently hangs banners for a number of different entities and events throughout the village. You can see there what that costs us as far as manpower and equipment use, and then the small banners, we have to actually rent a lift because it's so much easier than trying to get a bucket truck up and down the streets to do the smaller banners. In addition, we were asked to make some recommendations for potential charges for these events, and those are attached in the report for the museum.
Well, I'll say something. Staff brought this to council a year or so ago.
February 15.
And I don't remember the impetus initially for it, but it's just sort of languished there. And I did request that it be brought back to council, because I think it's part of, as we're looking at where we spend our money and where we bring in income, it makes sense to look at how the village government supports various community events. So, clearly, the biggest thing is the street fair event, which is considerably more investment than any of the others. I guess the next one would be the zombie walk. But I was interested in seeing that incentive policy, that incentive policy, because it occurred to me that there may be some of these events that we explicitly say, okay, the village is going to support this, we're not going to request spending money for it. But I think we need to be explicit and not just make the assumption that any community event, that the village will support it, and not either ask to be reimbursed, or at least request a- least request a, a request for financial support for doing that event. So I did have one question, Patty, which was, you said, your recommendation, the staff recommendation was that $25 an hour be charged for any event that costs over $200?
Twenty-five dollars an hour for staff time. So twenty-five dollars an hour per person, per hour for the time you spent.
So would that translate to any of these things like, let's say, the Zombie Walk, which costs roughly $800? Does that mean that...
That means that the other $591 worth, they would be asked to reimburse us.
So that's...
The first 200 would be forgiven.
Okay. Okay, I guess I'd like, I would like to...
Wait, they would be re, they would pay the 500 and some, or they would pay $20 an hour, $25 an hour?
It would be whatever, what you would do is, if the event costs $700, the first $200 are not charged for, whatever that is. After that, it's however much time we put into it at $25 an hour. This doesn't include anything like equipment wear and tear or anything like that, doesn't include...
So it's not...
It's strictly the man hours that you would put into it.
I mean, the only thing I think about that is the smaller events, which, you know, so Street Fair would also be $25 an hour?
Yeah, all the events would be the same. Everybody would be forgiven the first $200, and then after that, it would be $25 an hour for whatever manpower over the $200 that the village has to put in. The only difference is that it would, there was the, as you can see in the last comment, there was a discussion among staff as to whether or not to charge for the police department time, because it's considered safety by some, but others said, but it has a budget impact. So there wasn't really a clear consensus on staff about the PD's time. So the $25 an hour, as it stands, would be electric, water, streets, those crews. And then council would make the decision as to who's department.
The aspect that popped up to me the most was the police department question too, and I, I found myself not, you know, it was one of those things where I was like, aye, aye, I don't know. I wondered if there's precedent of other communities that have, you know, large events that, that create spikes in, in population density, and how that's handled typically?
We did a survey back in 2015 when we brought this, and it was about 50/50. Some, some communities support all of the events with no reimbursement, other communities ask for reimbursement in different levels. And it was about 50/50. And so, I think it was really, there's no, there's no good answer, because it is public safety, but at the same time, the police department budget is frequently a point of contention.
And is the, like, overtime, like, police overtime cost bundled into these?
The $25 an hour is a straight time cost for everyone. It's, we averaged all of the crew costs, the crew salaries, and it comes out to an average of $25 an hour. We did not charge an overtime rate.
So if there are ten, if there are ten staff members involved, we're charging $25 an hour times 10, and if there's one staff member, it's $25 times one, is that correct?
For every hour, yes.
For every hour.
On most of these events, is the cost primarily the police department?
On most of these events, the cost is primarily electric and streets. The electric is putting up the extra panels and things, snow fencing for some of the events, because they have beer gardens or whatever. There are some that include the police, like the Fourth of July. I know the PD uses on-duty officers for some of the 5K, like the Simply Women and all of that. For the MLK March, that's an on-duty officer. And again, anything that's less than $200, they wouldn't be charged for anyway, because we're probably using on-duty people who don't, that are available. The problem, the problem is that if you, you know, some of these events, it takes a couple of few days to set up for, so that means they don't get anything else done during that time.
Did you figure out approximately what that would mean for the events that are more than $200, I mean, like, cost-wise?
Well, I mean...
Because I don't, I don't know how many staff are working on Street Fair versus Zombie Walk versus...
Well, the, the costs that you see there include the estimated staff time.
So it sort of is already...
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars an hour?
These, these numbers are staff time. These numbers don't include anything else.
Okay, gotcha, sorry.
Well, I think one thing that's important to highlight in this discussion is why, when we did the research before, we found that many communities do support these events, because they do support local businesses, they support nonprofits, they, like Mark Heis' letter highlighted, you know, they, they market our village and make it a place that, you know, people are interested in exploring and potentially living. So, you know, I think that we do need to, you know, think about why, I think, most communities think it makes sense to support events on some level. I do agree with one thing, Mary Ann, that you said though, is we want to be transparent about all the things that we do. And, you know, so I, I think that piece is something that I definitely think we should explore. But I also believe we have a couple of people here in the audience that might want to speak, and so maybe we'll hear from citizens and then bring it back to us.
I would just like to say something.
Yes.
Clearly, the village supports a lot of economic development sort of things, as well as community development. And I don't have, I mean, I think that's appropriate, I mean, an example is the pool. The pool loses money. We support it because it's good for the community. What I do think, I didn't, I wasn't thinking transparent as much as explicit. So if we're going to let the Zombie Walk not pay any money, for example, then we should be explicit that, that it's costing us eight, approximately $800 to do that. And, and I don't have a problem charging for some of these events. And I also think it makes sense to have a mechanism so that people can apply to the village, and we have to have criteria, and that incentive policy might be the way to do it, of, of an event, someone that's doing an event applies to the village and say, this is what we're gonna do, and we would like the village to subsidize us a certain amount. Clearly, we're not gonna solve it tonight, but I think both of, we need to be looking at both of those things. If the village says, yes, we will subsidize this event in a certain amount, and we want you to submit some documentation about why you should do it, and, and the village can say, okay, we'll do it, and we'll also charge a certain amount.
And the $18,000 for Street Fair is for both of them?
Yes.
Is that, so does it make it $36,000?
No, no, it's a total.
Okay, so any comments? Karen Metrow?
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Karen Metrow, I'm the Executive Director of the Yellow Springs Chamber, and certainly, Street Fair is our big event, is our big fundraiser of the year, but we really support all of these events. About 10 years ago, when I became Director of the Chamber, one of the things we identified as a strategy we could use to attract people to town, to shop at our shops and eat at our restaurants, was to have events that people like to have something to do. So we, we have the Yellow Springs Experience, and we talk about the Yellow Springs Experience, that you come, you hike in the glen, you go to the Arts Council, dallowing your dreams, you shop in the shops, you go to the restaurants, you go to the brewery. It really is about an experience and offering things, people a day-long activity. So that's why these events are so important. And what they do for the community organizations are beyond, I mean, for us, obviously, Street Fair is our, is our largest moneymaker. We essentially couldn't exist without Street Fair as an organization. It allows us to employ a staff person, and that is probably 75 to 80% of her job, is doing Street Fair. But we support all of these events for the reason of attracting people. Springs Fest is another, a great new event, we're going into our third year, I don't know if you saw, we're bringing Guided by Boyses, which is a nationally-recognized group. They happen to be local, they happen to be Dayton-based, but they're a national group. So the folks, those, that concert promoter, Connor Stratton, is a local kid, he's doing this, he's investing money, there's, there's going to be money invested in that. The Chamber invests more than $75,000 in Street Fair. We provide buses, we provide transportation, we provide, we're actually going to be adding police service this year to have more people, and we're paying for that, working with Chief Carlson to pay for that signage, to make, to make getting around easier, the trash, the porta-johns, the dumpsters, so much of that we also pay for. So, so there really is a lot. And, and what, you know, 20,000 nonprofits, I mean, just a, a quick survey that I've done of the nonprofits, they're making $20,000 a year at Street Fair. I can guarantee you that there is not another way that those nonprofits, the PTO and the Boy Scouts make 5,000. There is not another way that they're gonna replace that, that amount of money. It is by virtue of the fact that there are so many people in town, for one day, they arrive, they leave, it is, it's pretty crazy when they're here, but they're gone by seven o'clock, you don't even know they were there. And I do want to say that I do have a list of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven events, and that we did the research. Events that I would consider closest to Street Fair in size and scope and importance to the communities, Troy Strawberry Festival, Centerville Americana Festival, Sauerkraut, Bellebrook Sugar Mabel, Fairborn Halloween Fest, and those communities support them all. There is, there are no fees paid. I think, I think with Strawberry Fest, they recently did require, they expanded it hugely, the bill went over $50,000. Troy is supporting Strawberry Fest for $50,000, and that's just one event that they're supporting. So there's a lot more to say. Actually, I do think Jerry Dear is one of our board members, did want to make some comments about some communities that don't support events.
Can I ask you?
Sure.
I have a couple more. You said that the Chamber supports some of these events, I guess, that are listed?
Oh, well, I mean, we advertise for them, and we, yeah, we do, I mean, we do, mostly it's in advertising. Springs Fest, we're, we're a sponsor, we, we do the beer garden, for us, it's a fundraiser, but it's also, we also do a lot of promotional support of that.
And the other question was, you said, you, the Chamber itself spends, I saw Japanese all evening, right? You spend $75,000 a year on Street Fair?
On Street Fair.
And that doesn't include our staff person? That doesn't include her salary?
All right, thanks Karen. Jerry Dear?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jerry Dear, and as Karen said, I am a newly-elected member of the Chamber Board, but I came to speak to you from a couple of different reasons. Haven't you been through Jamestown recently? What's left of it? One of the things that's really interesting about small towns like ours is that when the town itself stops supporting things in different ways, and obviously, you do not do that, you're a wonderful supporter of the business community here and the community itself, or I wouldn't be a part of the Chamber, I'm a part of the community here. But I can tell you that in my experience over the years, I work with a lot of events and activities, all of them Midwest, and every time I have seen, not just financially, but also just community support of events that are like the largest, the major event that draw people to the town, when that starts to deteriorate, the town starts to deteriorate. A lot of them have lost their, their infrastructure, they've lost their industry, some of them only depend on these things to just bring people back in. And I mentioned Jamestown because that's where I grew up, and when I was there, it was like living in Mayberry. We had everything, we had the soda fountain, we had all that, but we had the Lions Club Festival, the Bean Festival, it was called down. And if you go to that in September, what you're gonna see is a very sad image of what it used to be. And it's because the village and, and the Lions Club and the township just don't talk to each other. They don't make it work like it used to, they don't support it like they used to, and the people don't want to come back. So it makes it a very sad way to watch your, when you grew up there and you're still there and you watch it kind of deteriorate. Now, one festival is not gonna do that, obviously, we lost a lot of other things. But it does help when we know that festivals like this are, I mean, especially to think about the Street Fair being one day, and we've got festivals around here that go three, four days, and probably don't generate as much interest by percentage as our Street Fair does here. And it's interesting, because I, I think that the businesses here all benefit, I think the community benefits, it gives people a reason to come here, we have a lot of great things, we have the bike path, we have all these wonderful things, but I think that's a huge part of keeping the community active and keeping the community from becoming things like, like Jamestown and like Greenville. Did you ever hear of the Annie Oakley Festival? That's because it's this big, but it used to be, for almost 40 years, was one of the largest festivals in the state. And it was an amazing thing until there was a split, and they just stopped supporting it, stopped caring, and it kind of dried up and went away. So I just wanted, from an outsider's perspective that cares about this community, I just wanted to put that past you. Questions?
I don't know who you are, so I'm just wondering.
Well, I actually just left my position with DMS Inc., you know, DMS, this fair, as their Communications Director, and I have my two businesses in the Chamber here as well. So I got very active very quickly. But I grew up around here and I grew up in Yellow Springs, so I know very well.
Thanks, Jerry. Any other comments?
I just have one more quick question. So these numbers here, Patty, does that, this includes the police time, the, not the lists here, but you're suggesting that what people would pay would not include police time?
That's correct.
Only because when we did them originally, everybody, we included everybody.
So if we were to charge for police time, and we were to charge or at least account for the cost, these fees would be less?
Well, but you have to, but you have to, very mu, yes, they would be less, but not really very much, because most of these, as you can see, things like installing temporary electric poles, dropping barricades, putting up snow fencing, the police department doesn't do that. That is the truth. So while there is probably some small amount of police and safety in there for a couple of these, it is not the primary cost of the events.
And that's true of the Street Fair too, there's not extra police on there?
Everybody in the police department is on, but also everybody in all of our crews, except for the water and sewer treatment, all the other crews work at least part of those days, plus they work the two or three days ahead getting everything set up, so...
So police time would be a more significant amount in the Street Fair?
Yes, it would. Yes, everybody's, all staff time, including PD, would be a more significant amount, yes.
I'm intrigued, I'm, I'm getting more and more intrigued by Mary Ann's comments about, about the importance of understanding what the different kinds of incentives that are provided for different purposes. And on one hand, I hate to think that I'm thinking about another, some other layer of evaluation and bureaucracy, because that makes my head hurt. And I think we should try to be as simple, straightforward as we can, but then I also understand that as a village, we're facing, you know, a lot of, we want to be very, very responsible with every dollar we spend. You know, this is the community's money. And, and so I, as I look at this list, I, I don't like the feeling that I'm weighing their relative merits of these different activities, because they are meaningful to some group of constituents, and they, but, but maybe there is some relative merits. and they, but maybe there is some relative merits for the well-being of the village and the community. Maybe we should be thinking about, you know, do some of them have different incentives, different investments from the village over others? And I don't know how to quite work that out, but I'm not entirely comfortable just saying, that I'm not comfortable right now saying that I am comfortable with the staff recommendations. I'm compelled by the comments that were made by, you know, so I'm not comfortable just going forward. But I get, but I also get what you're saying about it has an impact on our finances.
I don't think that we're ready to make, I'm not ready to make a decision now, because we just asked for this to come. I don't think asking any nonprofit, we basically all nonprofit, to help pay for their event means that we don't support that nonprofit. So for example, if we said, if we tell, if we ask the Chamber to pay for some of the services that we're providing, I don't, to me, it's not saying we don't support the work of the Chamber. On the other hand, we may decide that the eighteen thousand, twenty thousand, whatever that we invest in the Chamber is a critical piece of economic development money that we have and we invested in the Chamber for that purpose. And we might want to have a stronger connection, we might want to have some say in that too. I don't know. I just think we should be aware of this.
Yeah, I think that's, that makes a lot of sense to me, because I think about the support that we give with all nonprofits, whether we talk about Polmink, which is an important partner, I think Chamber is an important partner, and thinking about how the relationship makes sense for the village in terms of building our capacity and, but I think it ultimately ends up being a net benefit to everyone. But, I mean, I agree that it's a good thing to think about.
I don't actually have a suggestion for next steps, except I would like to continue this discussion.
I was going to say, it'd be nice to, this is one of those things that, you know, Republicans have some ideas about. So I would say we put it on the table, maybe bring it back at some point. Relatively soon, you know, as a, kind of seeing if the community has any.
Yeah, the other thing is, you know, economic sustainability is pretty busy this next meeting, because we're ramping up on our learning curve about DCIC, but it does seem like some input from that body on this seems to fit the charter of that commission.
That makes sense to me. Yeah, I would like to, you know, my sense is that nonprofits and local businesses really value these events, but having confirmation of that is always good in directing, you know, what the decisions that we make. So if the ESC can help with that, I think, great. It sounds like this is also going to be, you know, out there and I would expect that we would get some more feedback, similar to letters like we got from Mark. So, okay. So I think it will come back, probably not for the April 2nd meeting, but maybe the second meeting in April. All right. So then we have the board and commission review, which was actually Judy's piece. I don't know, I'm tempted to maybe say that we table this, because Judy's done a lot of work. And she's also got this training plan, which I think is.
That's hilarious, Patty. That was the high point of the packet.
So, yeah, so.
Should we just sit all that up here, so she doesn't have to recopy it up for next meeting?
Yeah. Okay. So then, so we'll bring that back to our next meeting and Lisa, then I have your utility affordability update.
Sure, I just want to circle back, I'm not going to take a lot of time on it, but I just want to, I want to report that work has continued from when this was originally proposed. On the fifth, the goals haven't shifted. Right now, the focus is specifically on electric utility costs. And I really want to thank Melissa and Patty, you know, particularly during this transition time, for all the help that you're giving to not lose momentum on this issue that's very, very important to a lot of people in our community, really people from all economic levels. We're trying to understand the cost impact of the electric rates on households of various size and also really, I think something that's really popped out for me is, you know, maybe a month or so ago, we heard the budget report, which was very, very positive, and that's something that we should be really glad that our village is solidly in the black. But, you know, those big, those big dollars in those pools don't mean that that's just all this kind of money that we're swimming around in, because there's a lot of expenses. So I've been thinking about the village just as if it's a big house. It's just our big house. And you know how it is when you have a house and then you know that you're going to get a new furnace and, you know, you need probably a roof in a couple of years, and so maybe you've put some money together and it's in an account, but that doesn't just be like, hey, we can just spend it, you know? So really, what we're, we're really trying to be as clear as we can to understand what are the major expenses that are going to be coming up over the next few years that we know the village needs. Our house needs repair, all you have to do is walk around and look at it and you can tell. So the intention is to try to do all we can, particularly around electric rates, but in keeping in mind what's needed. So that's what's going on right now. I want to point out, though, there's a bunch of stuff in the packet that Mary Ann pointed out, and I want to thank Ellis Jacobs and other community members who've been sending in a wealth of resources about ways that people can help with their utilities and programs that are out there, and HRC is going to be taking that up. So the HRC is going to be focusing more on a programmatic approach and then the finance committee is focusing more on an analysis of what might be done. That, thank you for giving me some time today.
Thank you. And, you know, I think one other piece, just to elaborate on, is I know that the village team has done some work on thinking specifically about what those infrastructure projects look like.
We have, and we actually had a meeting set for Friday that we had to, we have to cancel because Lisa will be out of town. But, yes, there, and specifically with the Lyford Fund, two of the major ones that we've been talking about are the Third Circuit, which I have ballparked about a million and Johnny says about seven hundred thousand, who's probably much closer than I am. And, well, but then he also said that he all needs about three hundred thousand more dollars worth of poles. So, and in addition to that, there are some upgrades at the transfer station that need to happen, these re-closures, because these power outages, part of the reason that it happens, are the re-closures are so old, they're not setting properly, so it will reduce the number of people affected by outages if we can get our re-closures upgraded.
What is that?
It's a thing that when, it's like a circuit breaker. And so when an outage hits, for instance, the other day when somebody hit the guide wire on the pole down on Corrin High, about fifty people lost power. If the re-closures had worked properly, probably only about five people would have lost power, because it would have closed off the rest of the circuit and supply. And it does make it more difficult to find an outage when that happens, because you have to run a little line and figure out what happened. But those are just a few of the, that Johnny threw at me today, I was scribbling down.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. And let's go ahead and move into new business. And so the first thing we added was the arts and cultures budget request. One thing I can give by way of background is last year, we gave the Arts and Culture Commission four thousand for a similar sort of set of projects. And I think all council members know that we've set aside a total of twenty-five thousand for all of our commissions. At this point, only the HRC has requested a budget, which was eighty-five hundred. So.
So what?
Any, I don't know.
Prove the, is that what you're?
Sure, oh, yeah, I mean, if we don't have any discussion, then I'll.
That's what is, we are discussing, is that right?
Yes, yes.
The Arts and Culture request, not the HRC.
Right.
No, but you're just saying that in total, the requested budget from commissions in total is well under the budget that's been requested for your.
Right.
I could make a motion that we go ahead and honor that request.
Okay, I'll second. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Thank you on behalf of the commission.
Yeah, I really think the Willing Gottes project is something that I think is very important for us to support. Okay, so then Judy, if we have the JSTF request for feedback?
Yeah, I just wanted to draw people's attention to something that they're going to see in the newspaper. The JSTF decided some time back that, you know, there's certain kinds of recommendations we may want to make to council that we would like to hear from, you know, village citizens, our police officers, mayor, and we don't want to bring some recommendation and we get it to council and then we get that feedback and we discover that we hadn't considered some important issues. So the first time we're intending to use this, what's been called notice and comment, is this week, we're going to have in the newspaper, and I put a little letter to the other day, but we're going to have a little notice and it's about a recommendation that the village kind of adopted policy requiring the use of the Yellow Springs Mayor's Court for all misdemeanor cases in any village unless otherwise required. And that's pretty much all I was going to say. It says, you know, here's how to give us feedback, you know, through the clerk or to come to our meeting on April 10th. We will also be noticing police department through the chief and we'll be communicating with mayor and then we'll take all that information and people are welcome to come to our next meeting, which is April 10th, when we will make a decision on that recommendation, if we're going to make any adjustments to it. So I just wanted to draw your attention to it, in case anybody asks you questions about it. So it'll be, you know, an official notice for the next three weeks in the newspaper.
So I did have one question.
Yeah.
I mean, on its face, using our mayor's court, you know, maximizing its use totally makes sense to me. I guess I'm just wondering, I mean, how will people provide any, I don't know, critical feedback about this proposal? I mean, is there, is there more information to understand that?
Well, there was more information presented to the meeting and we had a very interesting, I thought, discussion about it, but we thought when we noticed it, we didn't want to try to make the case for it, I guess, but that was, that was what was decided, that we just sort of put it out there. I mean, people have been thinking about it. We thought probably the main place we would hear more concrete thoughts was from the police department and mayor, may have some thoughts there too, though, you know, the policy is towards our, more towards the police department, since they make the citations. And so, so, I don't know, that was the rationale behind it, is not putting any rationale in the statement.
Right.
And I think the only thing that, the only thing that I would be concerned that people, I think people should know before they give the feedback, I think is important that they know that what can be, can't be cited to mayor's court, because as you point out in the policy, there are some things that can't be, and so I think that that's important. So I don't know that if maybe just a little informational sheet that can go with that, you know, that can be left here for pickup or just put on the Facebook page or something that says, when you're giving this feedback, keep in mind, here's what has to go to Z by law and here's what can be cited to mayor's, because there are a few things that we don't have a choice on.
Well, I mean, it says that, it's a little complicated to explain, but that's the problem. Getting into, trying to get into it, I mean.
Yeah, one specific thing is that a lot of folks would like to see Judy not cited to mayor's court, while as it stands right now, you cannot cite a Judy not to mayor's court. And so I think it's important for people to understand those things.
Well, I do think when this comes back and, because I assume we'll be making a decision.
We'll be discussing.
I think it would be important to have that in the packet, so that people do understand what the limits are. Yeah, I mean, I know where I stand on this, I guess, but I guess that's always been a thing for me is if there is kind of another side or something that would inform people's feedback, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, for sure.
And the one, only thing that I think about, first of all, I think this is excellent to formalize ways to get feedback from the community. I think it's exciting, I think it's really positive, I think it's consistent with our values. You know, when you're doing gate collection, I go back and forth on anonymity, you know, and privacy. And on one hand, if people have their names, you know, and they send your email, then there's their name, maybe some people aren't as comfortable sharing their ideas, but then I did wonder if, before Justice System Task Force receives this input from the public, if it's all coming to Judy, right?
It's coming to Judy or going to, or the people coming to the meeting, and then there's a slightly different process with the police department where there is the possibility for anonymity.
I'm just wondering if responses that come in via email could be anonymized before they come to Justice System Task Force as well? Just, you know, for more neutrality, maybe that adds work, but it's just an idea. And in which case.
I don't think we're going to be able to do it this, this is our, kind of our first effort. So, yeah, hearing how, you know, if there's ways to improve the process that people want to think about.
That's good.
Yeah, I just didn't think of that before.
All right. All right, well, thank you, and I agree, I like this effort to be more intentional about getting feedback, so. All right, then it looks like we're moving into the reports.
This is great.
Yeah, and Patty, would you like to start with the managers' report?
Yeah, the only thing that I'm going to reiterate again is about the no discolored water tomorrow, because the route exercising machine did not come in. It may occur later this week or next week. We will let you know as soon as we get a date, we will put that up on the websites and the website, Facebook page, and Ask the Y, as soon as to put it up online for us like they always do, and we appreciate very much. And don't forget that water for drinking and cooking is available at the Yellow Springs Police Department Dispatch window when that happens. And the only other thing I want to point out is, we're still taking the Gaunt Park pool positions, that a lot of local youth apply for those, and I want to congratulate Kater Bussie on getting his class two sewer collection license and Dale Fisher on getting his class one, which is very important for our community operation. So if anybody has any questions on anything else, answer first.
Well, did we want to talk about the pool? I think Lisa, you had asked. I think that was a separate.
Yeah, I think so, because I see that there is, that revenue information is there, and thank you for that, but I think we still don't know the cost side, so I think we'll have to know.
Next meeting for the repairs.
But, you know, I have to say that after the comment that was made about communities that support things, as I was looking at them. that support things, as I was looking at the, um, the cost of the pool, I was thinking of a, of an amazing book that I've recently read called Dreamland, The True Tale of America's Opiate Epidemic, that's by Sam Pinone's. And what you might not know if you haven't read the book is Dreamland is a swimming pool. It's a community swimming pool. And the whole book starts with this story about this community swimming pool and what it meant to the community and how, when that kind of went away, the community began to fall apart. And so, you know, given some of the other conversations tonight about being a community that supports activities and supports things, I, it's an amazing book and I want to keep it stuck in my mind when we talk about the pool.
Yeah, I think we should put that as a separate item.
I agree.
And I wondered if we should have a little, the, uh, the thing from the municipal league about, you know, you, isn't this regarding, this is regarding, you had said that the state legislatures acted like the Ohio Municipal League had not got an opinion about it.
Right.
And so I, I'm still curious, also how did, how is it that they, that the, you know, uh, state legislatures are making, saying that when this fellow from the Ohio Municipal League is saying the exact opposite, so I'm...
Well, I, I can tell you that you don't have an answer to that, but Kent Scare is gonna get it because he was very upset.
Uh-huh.
I sent him an email and ten minutes later, he was on the phone.
Okay, because that made no sense to me, uh, when Brian said that was what was said and that's really...
He was, he was very upset.
I...
So, he, he was following up on that himself.
Good. This is regarding the state collecting our taxes, that legislation, and Brian was saying like he was at the state, what state, they claimed that they had no negatives about it from the Ohio Municipal League, which we didn't understand because they've always been very strong on these kind of issues.
Right.
And it turns out, it sounds like, maybe it wasn't true.
He was, he was...
Maybe they said they said it wasn't true.
Kent was very upset and then, like, within ten minutes, he was on the phone, okay.
Okay, um, Melissa?
Um, this past week, I received a check from the Army Corps of Engineers for two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and thirty-two cents, which closes out that grant account finally. Very timely. So, um, just as a recap, the village paid two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand and some change for the infrastructure project and we're receiving back almost two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand. So, um, some of my early estimates proved to be true that we would be getting back more money than what we were investing at the time for that infrastructure project. So that grant is now closed out, which is great. And then, um, just a few loose end pieces of legislation before I leave next meeting will be my last meeting, so I want to make sure that I've got everything, um, ready to go and tied up so that the transition is very smooth. So I'm gonna do supplemental appropriations and transfer ordinance and then, um, the pool legislation, uh, for adding the, the one rate to that and then we'll have the fees as well, so, or not the fees, the, uh, construction estimates as well for the different projects that need to be done, so that's it for me.
Okay, Sergeant Hatt.
I did want to say I like this, uh, new format. That's, that's very useful. And, uh, the statistics report?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thought that was really, kind of, glad that worked out.
Yeah.
And it seems like that...
We need to get that part of the copy.
No, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, because the total offenses reported were a hundred-and-twenty-five and the total citations were sixty-three, so does that mean that the other sixty-two, whatever it is, were given warnings?
Uh, I'm not sure on that. I think what that actually is, is when we have total citations issued, that includes , uh, warnings, criminal arrests and traffic citations that are issued, all lumped together in that one large, uh, amount that you see there, the sixty-two would be the total.
But if the total offenses were a hundred-and-twenty-five...
Well, there's offense reports that we take, criminal reports that we wouldn't have arrests or citations issued for, so that number will always be skewed. We don't make an arrest every time we get a case.
Yeah, that's...
So it could be for like someone breaking into a car because we don't have a suspect?
Right, right. If we had a vehicle theft, we didn't know who did it, there would be an associated citation or arrest made with that case report because the person who did it was unknown.
Well, like, say someone is speeding and you stop them, but you decide to give them a warning because maybe they were eleven mile or something, now would that fall into the offense report?
No. No, the citations issued or whatever includes traffic warnings, traffic citations and then criminal tickets that are issued. Um, any other arrests that maybe were more arrests or were felonies, where we don't issue tickets for those, those aren't included.
And maybe you should explain what a criminal ticket is.
So, most, most of our criminal tickets are issued for misdemeanor offenses that, um, that we are involved in, that we have a suspect for case reports, or somebody reports, somebody stole something out of their car, and we know who did it and we were able to go get them and solve our case and we were able to issue a criminal citation and summon them to court. Very good for that, for example. We issue them a summons, they show up, that's a citation. So it goes down as a, would be an associated offense report, offense report taken, um, but the citation was also issued at that case, I guess. Maybe that even working...
Citations are not just moving violations.
Right, they're not just moving violations, they can be criminal violations and warnings. Actually, criminal warnings too, we give people warnings for criminal violations all the time, so they can include all those.
Okay, thanks Sergeant Hatt. Alright. And thanks again for all the work on the policy stuff too. Excellent. Um, alright, uh, Chris?
Uh, I've got nothing to add at this point.
And I think Judy's...
Actually, I do.
Oh.
Uh, their, that appeal was filed in the HB forty-nine litigation.
Okay. Uh, which court was that filed in?
Uh, it would be Franklin County.
Okay, that's looking correct.
But, Tenth District.
Um, and then I think Judy said busy, business as usual. So, uh, with that, um, we're on to board and commission reports, I know, uh, hopefully Tom will get here soon.
Yeah, I, I, I have, um, submitted written reports for, some of my reports.
Yes.
And, I, I, so I'm not gonna go over everything that I have in my report. I guess a couple things that I didn't, uh, say, I just want to acknowledge Nadia Malarki who sponsored the non-pesticide workshop a couple weeks ago, it was all day workshop and brought in two national people who work in this field and that was pretty incredible. And also, it was very, um, we really liked working with the Council Land Trust on the Blast Farm Project, Environmental Commission. So, I have to written an Environmental Commission annual report, I don't know whether we want to, I sort of suspect Tom is not coming. I, I texted him, I didn't get a response. So I can either go over it or I can ask him to come and give it.
I kind of was feeling the key should come and maybe just...
Okay, you can ask him to do that. And the, just, I will say that there are three things that the Environmental Commission is gonna bring to council to, uh, as recommendations. And, uh, one is the, the revisions to the source water protection plan, the wellhead protection plan, so we have, that has been completed. Uh, the second is the climate action plan that has been completed and approved by the Environmental Commission. But we have not submitted these to council.
Right, and I saw the, the document that was in the packet, um, I assume that it was related to the climate action plan, the risk assessment?
No.
No?
No, um, I can address that.
Okay.
And the third is, uh, a recommendation that we establish a commission or a sub-commission of the Environmental Commission to provide oversight management of the Blast Farm Conservation Area. So, they will be coming and we can talk about when we want them to come to council, but...
Is that different than the Beaver Management?
It's, it's taking the Beaver Management Task Force and instant, and making some change, enlarging the scope of, of what that group has been doing to cover the Blast Farm area, to cover the wetlands as well as... And the risk assessment is for our two thousand and eighteen goals.
Okay.
And we're still in the progress of developing that, so we don't actually have the goals yet.
Well, I thought it was an interesting document and it seemed to speak to things that we're trying to do with the Climate Action Plan.
Yeah, uh, Deanna Muesa, who works for the Rainforest, either Network or Alliance, I can't remember, it's a process that she uses in her organization, so she, she had us use that process, so...
Cool.
Okay, well, I won't, uh, on to Tom.
Right, and who knows, maybe, uh, do we grab some more board and commission stuff? Maybe he'll get here more early.
Yeah, but I would like to take this opportunity to nominate him, uh, for a second term on the Environmental Commission. He's a very active member of EC, he works in, uh, the environmental engineer, he is an environmental engineer, he's our secretary and, uh, he's been one of the team members on the Blast Farm Project, and it would be great to happen, so I'd like to nominate him.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thought he's willing to stay on board. Okay, um, so did you have any?
No, I, unless someone has, I reported on the advisory committee, housing advisory committee, planning commission, village mediation program and the environmental...
And, and my, um, my reports are also unfiled and given that both, uh, arts and culture and economic sustainability presented their annual reports and foreshadowed, uh, the goal setting and planning, and that's been kind of the focus. So I, I don't have anything additional, yeah.
You know, I forgot to mention when the Arts and Cultures Report happened, uh, something I meant to ask is, you know, the pot shop, the, the pot shop, you know, all around...
The Veronica Community Pottery.
Do you mean the community pottery?
Yeah.
I thought that's what you used to be called.
It, it still is.
Okay.
I use, I call it that often.
Okay, yes, that's just what I meant, pottery, the pottery.
Well, if you get any dispensary, you won't be able to call that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I just, I mean, I'm remembering that they have programs that, um, they try to make accessible to, you know, young people and cetera, but anyway, I just wondered what the relationship is between the pottery shops, you know, given that it's a facility of the village and the arts commission and, I guess I...
Right, a couple years back, we did have, um, the director of community pottery was, um, coming to the Arts and Culture meetings, um, but currently, not much of a relationship. I do know though that that is still something that, as far as those community programs that are part of, either they're agreeing with the village, they still do that.
Yeah, I just kind of lost track of it, because I, it'd be nice to hear a report from them, I, I kind of was feeling like we haven't heard from them, I think, since I've been back on campus.
And they, and they have a new director.
Oh, do they?
Well, I don't, I don't remember the name quite, I haven't met them, but Crystal left, but, um, and, and they, they do lease from us, but they, they aren't village.
Well, we had an agreement and, anyway, it would be nice to hear one of them.
Yeah, let's try to, uh, let's try to, uh, through the Arts and Culture Commission, uh, do some outreach again, um, because it was nice to have someone there regularly.
It's a great resource, it's, it is a community resource, um, and... Okay, that was, sorry, I forgot to say that. Um, so, um, Energy Board, we switched the day, so I was like, I was like, I can't remember what happened, but I wanted to report on and it's, the meeting is tomorrow, so we haven't had a meeting since the last report. Uh, Library Commission hasn't had a meeting, uh, because we're on quarterly now. The Justice System Task Force, um, the other thing that, things that are going on, just so people who may have an interest, um, uh, there is a new little working group on issue of surveillance, you know, with the new technology that makes more and more, you know, your ability to have privacy less and less and the way that that interfaces with, uh, law enforcement is something that a lot of communities, um, Ellis brought this to the committee, are actually trying to put some parameters around and, for example, when there are, um, you know, even the police, um, cameras and how those, those images are stored and how long and just those kind of questions, um, evidently, a lot of communities are really looking at that because, you know, it, it's sort of a Pandora's box that's been opened and, um, so we want to be keeping an eye on it, so they're doing some research. Uh, they're looking for, uh, citizens who might be interested in participating, uh, because our work committees have citizens who are not members of the task force on them, so, so if there's anybody interested in that, they can let the clerk know and pass it on to the JSTF. Um, the, um, there's, the group, uh, has just been started, we're just getting going, uh, where we're looking at disparate impacts of the justice system on people, low-income poor people and, um, and, you know, how we can be changing that through working with our mayor's courts, our great hope, and, um, we had the first very good meeting, uh, so we're working on that, again, if there's anybody interested to join us, um, there's always more to do. And then, um, the police, uh, working group, you know, has, um, uh, one thing that was brought up, I mean, they've tried to support the chief and the department around training issues, um, one recommendation they had made and then there was, I don't know if it came to council, was this idea of sponsoring a potential officer to the local academy. And I wanted to bring it up because there was kind of a question of, you know, we, we had this idea, you know, nothing was really done with it. So I thought if the council was at all interested in them doing more research, like, what does it cost and, you know, how do you, you know, evidently other communities sometimes have these kind of programs, um, and the idea would, you know, be that if we help them get their training, then they would be, you know, committed to our department for some period of time.
We're actually already working on that.
Oh, you are?
The chief and I have talked about it a couple of times and then, uh...
Okay, we weren't sure what was, what was happening, but then we didn't know we needed a meeting.
Brian and I were in a meeting, we had just, earlier on this...
I will let, I will let the, I will let the committee know that there's actually some action behind the scenes going on in that.
Yeah, did you, had you already mentioned Tony Ortiz, or did you, so that was the meeting that we had, he is the, um, uh, the diversity liaison, right? Uh, for the Attorney General's Office.
Okay.
And that was something that he talked about, uh, as, as something to accomplish.
Awesome, well, if there's any support work we can do, uh, let us know, you know, to research it, if you guys are handling it, that's totally fine. I think, and then the mayor's court has been working on this, uh, recommendation that, you know, we're asking for it to go on, so that's the work we've been doing. Oh, and I have a motion to add, uh, to, I'm nominating Beth Crandall to be an official member of the commission. She worked very closely around the data, uh, report, uh, she's excellent and I totally think we should put her on the commission.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lisa, I just remembered with your, um, finance committee report, was, was there a request that you wanted, that was at the end of that, that you wanted to highlight or...
Well, really, um, yeah, it was, it was more really asking for the support of, from council for some continued, you know, to keep working on it, to continue to do a focused analysis, um, taking into account the major infrastructure costs that we know are coming up, that, that we could continue to explore different rate structures.
And, and I certainly support those efforts, I think.
Me too.
Can make a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Great, well, uh, yeah, go ahead Judith.
I was gonna say, I can start then.
Um, I don't have a lot to highlight, I think what I wrote was mostly just to give us some perspective about what's going on around our borders, uh, now that I'm attending these Green County Regional Planning Commission meetings and seeing, you know, Sugar Creek, Sugar Creek Township in particular, but other townships are just kind of exploding with these developments, four-hundred-plus units, um, so, uh, anyway, so that's going on all around the county and, uh, the upside at least is, these are all contemplating trails and green space and not planting invasives, so at least there are some...
Taking...
Yeah, they're right, allowing, well, and I guess now it's kind of illegal to buy them, right? That's what I've been told.
Illegal to buy what?
Uh, invasive species, yes.
Oh, it's coming in?
Yeah, it is coming.
Perfect timing, so... Perfect timing. So, and as Tom gets a chance to settle, I'll just also say, within the RPC, I got to compliment Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission on the Complete Streets Workshop and guidance that they gave us. And a lot of the communities were very intrigued by this concept.
Do you work on this too?
Oh, yes.
The, what, the board?
I am now on the executive committee for NB RPC, representing Green County. So we're going to hear even more about trails and no invasive and everything else. All right, so perfect time to Tom.
Great.
Move the economic or environmental commission report to now.
Great, thank you. Thanks for fitting me in to the schedule that accommodate my schedule. And appreciate the opportunity to talk to council about the Environmental Commission. It's been a really great year. Sorry, probably, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, that's more for the audience and all.
Okay. So the 2017, 2017 was a really good year for the Environmental Commission because, you know, it really started to take, get some traction. We've been planting a lot of seeds figuratively and, and really in the ground. But these efforts are starting to manifest, so we're actually seeing some things. So that's what this report actually has some tangible progress. So in 2017, for example, the Glass Farm efforts, the conservation area, and we got a grant for in 2016, a two-year grant, and so a lot of the fruits of that labor have come. For example, all the invasive pears and Japanese honeysuckles removed. Four acres of prairie was planted, over 300 trees and shrubs were planted, native trees and shrubs. Some stone benches were created by a local stonemason. So the place and signs were designed, so all that stuff is really making that project wrap it up. It actually is completing this month, so next year's annual report, you get a little bit extra. And I also want to give a shout out to the village staff for assisting with mowing and doing some other maintenance on the sand. So that's been a good collaboration. Climate Action Plan has been developing. You'll be getting a report showing some of the fruits of the labor of that effort. But, so that was, a lot of the focus of 2017 was actually developing this planning document. It's not a complete climate action plan, but a lot of research has gone into it and developing potential actions and opportunities for the village. So that is, has been moving along. The waste, reducing waste and increasing recycling has been a new focus that's kind of, we got a new member last year, Tina Stolzenberg, who's kind of taking up that. And so making some efforts there, looking into ways to increase recycling, and especially targeting, one of the big opportunities there is with apartments, because, you know, all the residents have access to recycling, but not all the, most apartment buildings do not. A lot of research there and making headway. Another big thing that's been ongoing and came to a completion is the Source Water Protection Plan, or the Wellhead Protection Plan. Terms are kind of interchangeable. But there was an existing plan from 2001 that needed to be updated, so it should have been, you know, it needs to be updated fairly more frequently than it was. So we did a lot of research there, again, collaborating with village staff, especially at the water plant. And that, also, I think the completion of the update will be in 2018 again, but... And one of the other important factors there is that there's an education component of the Wellhead Protection Plan, so a lot of educational materials have been developed, which should be coming out this year, which coordinates perfectly with the installation and the, kind of finalizing construction of the new water plant. It's a perfect synergy there. And then promoting the reduction of pesticide use. Again, another good collaboration with village staff, village staff came out in two, this happened in 2018 also. But a lot of the groundwork was laid in 2017 to get resources and information and speakers to come out and do an all-day workshop for practitioners, including village staff and other local municipalities that we reached out to, trying to do a lot of outreach, and Nadia Malarki. And had these experts come in and talk about ways to reduce pesticide use and organic lawn care and that type of thing, both for residents. And then there was an evening workshop for residents, but the practitioner-focused workshop wasn't all day, exercise. Also, some groundwork was laid for rebooting the pollinator generation project. There's Mark, one more. And I'm happy to be a part of it, and I know I've just talked an awful lot, but did you all have any questions from the reporter from anything that I just said? Do you got for us?
It's excellent. I mean, I'm very excited about the Climate Action Plan piece moving forward, so I'm going to be looking forward to that. And I had mentioned before you came in, I liked the risk assessment document that I saw that was in the packet.
Good.
So, it's great.
Good, thank you. Yeah, we had a, had a good, the past two years, we've done a sort of a retreat at the beginning of the year to lay our plans, look at goals, and risk assessment was one of the things we did this year's retreat. Anyone else?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. And thanks to our, Mary and our liaison, and to you for being the backup now. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for taking the time to get it.
You bet. Thanks for fitting me in.
Okay, so I think we're moving to agenda planning, and there is a lot of legislation on the horizon. And I know we've talked about a few, quite a few things that we want to be thinking about, we've got...
So, you know, I'm seeing that the resolutions for Climate Action, Source Water Protection, and Glass Farm are all listed for the second. Council may, each one of them would deserve some time, especially the Climate Action and the Source Water Protection.
Right.
So I'm wondering whether we want to have them all.
I think we, I don't think we should. And, you know, I think they probably got, they were there as a holding place. If we picked one for next meeting, would that be Source Water?
If we did the Glass Farm Conservation, that would really finalize that, that work. I really, Tom, you probably didn't see, but there was a really good document in our packet on Hope Path about Brown Bar. And if we could get her involved in some way to come here and help our education program on Source Water Protection, I would love to do that.
Well, you know she lives in the county, right? Yeah, she's real close.
So that's why I'd like to pull the Source Water off, see whether we might be able to get her to come.
So we're moving Source Water and Glass Farm?
No, we're going to keep the Glass Farm.
Okay.
So we're just moving the Source Water.
More Source Water, and I don't know.
To the 16th?
I don't have a sense of how much time the Climate Action, Tom, do you?
Well, I can't speak for, can't really speak for Durick because he's really heading this up. But, so I don't know what is, I know he has a presentation or, you know,
Yeah.
to present the information, which is opportunities and potential next steps. So I don't know if you just want it to be an informational presentation, or if you want to have the dialogue, or if he's hoping to have more of a dialogue about... Sure he wants to get some next steps laid out too, so.
But it is ready to go for April 2nd?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, a lot of this legislation is not going to take a significant amount of time, so it may be a good discussion to keep on for April 2nd, but we can look at that again. I do see the designated CIC discussion will have to move to the 16th because ESC doesn't have a meeting until the 4th, if it's even ready for that meeting. And does anyone see anything else, I guess, that we should be prioritizing for the 2nd in particular?
I mean, I guess I would say, in terms of the Source Water Protection, that there is a plan itself kind of proving it, and then there's the education piece. If we wanted to do the Source Water Protection at our next meeting, we could do that, but to affirm, to update the plan, and then come back maybe another time with the education. How do you have a?
I guess I don't really have a firm idea either way. I mean, the plan itself is done, but I think some of the educational thing kind of got laid to the side because George was going to help on those, and now he's unable to be a member any longer. So they probably aren't ready quite yet. I mean, we could get the update itself off our plates, if that's what we wanted to do, and then develop the educational materials and bring those back as we go. I mean, the updates were really simple, so.
Well, for one thing, I could see whether Durick would be available at our next meeting because he's critical for the Climate Action. So I guess we already said, no. Maybe we can see how much time they, things are going to take for agenda planning.
Yep.
Decide then about the Source Water Protection.
That sounds good. So any other?
I'm wondering, I'm looking to see again where those housing community meetings are. Does there need to be a loop to get information back from that?
Well, our next meeting's going to be the 28th, I think.
You're talking about information back after they're all done.
Yeah, about back to council.
Yeah, they won't all be done until the 21st of, yeah, the 21st of April is the last one.
The pool. Was that a great decision? That's all I can think of.
And we do have the pool.
The pool, it's on there, yeah.
Okay, well, that looks good. And so if there is nothing else, I will ask for a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of potential litigation.
I believe that we move into executive session for the purpose of potential litigation.
Perfect.
Can we do a roll call?
Hemphill. Crater.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes, Houch.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.